Balls are not falling to the back of, you know what?
But Michael knows.
President, we are live. We are live.
For what version?
One thirty-nine.
Yep.
I'm gonna use that one.
All right.
I don't really think you're...
I'm sorry. I wasn't losing it.
I'm just gonna look at something. Scott?
I think you're ready. Turn everything off.
Jay? Sure. Tommy? How you doing?
Yeah, I'm doing well.
You doing what? So, the guy walks in trouble. He had drinks on. The guy walks in trouble. He's going forward with that. Okay. We need to take this probably. I'll give him all the guys or something. Some good stuff in there. Guy walks into your bar and leans down. It comes in and just follows in. It was a little click here. It's got a video of each part of the road they drove over. Okay. If you get the online version of it.
Okay. Call the meeting to order. If everybody please rise for the pledge allegiance and then a moment of silent reflection, please.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, for its liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Bert, roll call, please.
Councilman Eads?
Here.
Councilman McDaniel?
Here.
Councilman Hayes?
Present.
President Peters?
Here.
Councilman Hitt?
Here.
Councilwoman Trainer?
Present.
Councilman Stahl?
Present.
Councilman Norman?
Present.
Okay, before we go on to the minutes, we're gonna amend the agenda this evening.
Yeah. Can I make a motion to amend the agenda to include legislation, resolution? Is it a resolution or an ordinance? Resolution, thank you. Resolution one thirty-nine dash twenty-four.
Sir, a second.
Oh, second.
Councilman Norman?
Yes.
Councilman Stahl?
Yes.
Councilwoman Trainer? Yes. Councilman Hitt?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilman McDaniel?
Yes.
Councilman Eads?
Yes.
Okay. Thanks, Michael. On to the minutes. Everybody get a chance to take a look at this. Any corrections or concerns?
There were no changes.
Hearing none, a home in favor?
Aye.
Same sign. Public hearing, none. Communications and announcements. I do want to make one announcement. July fourth meeting, plan on canceling that. We'll just have one meeting in July. Like a good... Boys vote on that if they're basically, maybe they matter at this point. All right. So, everybody in favor of canceling July fourth meeting?
Aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Okay. With that being said, you know, July, probably, the second meeting will probably be a busy one. Administration knows, so if they have stuff, it needs to be done. We'll get there. Audience concerns, we just have one this evening. Tommy Boyd, if you come up, state your name and address. Record, please.
Good evening. Tommy Boyd, forty-eight North Union Street. Just a couple of things for you guys tonight, but first one to start off with, thank you to Mr. Long and Chief Nickel for helping get the handicap signs up to code. That was a good kind of info from one of the citizens that I'm glad we followed through on. My next piece was more of just kind of my own thought on one of the things that's kind of going through, which is the new phase three of the developments back on Jacob Lane there with seventy new homes. I know that there was supposed to be a traffic study that kind of went along with this before the next approval, and it sounds like we got that done. However, it was interesting to hear at the Safety Committee that there was a comment about this being one of the top streets still that's receiving speeding complaints going down through it. So, you know, maybe something to think about that, hey, you know, if we're gonna continue to add back there, maybe looking into getting the second outlet going while that next phase is getting started, or else just kind of food for thought. After that was, I've been taking a lot of the, you get one yard of free dump each month for people in London. If you didn't know that, fill the truck bed of crap, take it over to the dumpster. It's free. But been going over there and chatting with them and even seeing the online posts of, hey, sorry if trash is delayed today. Had mine even kind of missed in the afternoon the other day. However, with us handing six million dollars from our BPU over to Mid-Ohio, it just kind of feels sad that they've argued for the last year asking for trucks, asking for the correct tools to do the job they need to do consistently. You know, those trucks break down, they're pretty sophisticated trucks, and now that it's not a, hey, switch a spark plug and on they go. And so, I was gonna see if we had anything in mind for maybe getting them a new trash truck or kind of move along with that.
Six million dollars to Mid-Ohio. Water money has to stay with water, sewer money has to stay with sewer, sanitation money has to stay with sanitation. So, that money that's going to Mid-Ohio, we can't use on the trash truck. So, there's the first thing.
I get you, and the BPU is the main issue there, not you. It's kind of a however...
No, I'm just trying to explain, because you said six million dollars, like we could use that for the trucks. The money that's going to Mid-Ohio cannot be used for sanitation trucks.
Oh, well, I know that. I'm saying that any of that money, though, that was within BPU, I would have liked to have seen them trying harder, maybe. You know, maybe that's the most I can really say from that one is, they do need help. You know, just having that extra truck there to make sure, hey, we're being serviced correctly.
So, water money has to stay with water, sewer money has to stay with sewer, sanitation money has to stay with sanitation. You can't intermingle those dollars. So, with that being said, Les and I have been talking, and Rex, and he is going to be coming and talking about getting a new truck.
Cool.
Either the next finance meeting or the one in July, probably. That's, that was what he kind of came up with, because a couple of the trucks that keep breaking down are the old white ones, so we're having, that's where the big issues coming in, when the old, old ones go down, it's tough.
Yep, and I figured there wasn't much to talk about with everything with Mid-Ohio. It was mostly, you know, hey, it's in our charge now, so what we're gonna do? So, I'm glad to hear that we're talking about it. My last piece came from the Safety Committee the other day. The dismissal of the safety precautions being put up at Cowling Park, the crosswalks and the line striping. I'd like to see it hopefully brought up again to finance somebody else. You know, a hundred thousand dollars for something that possibly will keep anybody safe on that street from being hit, I think is still low cost to be paying. You know, I hope we don't forget that the main reason that was kind of brought up was because of somebody passing and a mother with a stroller trying to cross that almost got hit because the person passing the other car didn't see her. And so, I know it's a hefty bill there, but you know, as far as kind of, hey, what can we do? If that park continues to grow, that area continues to grow, you know, I'd say, hey, we bump a little more into it even, so we don't just have them on the sides. Get something that actually hangs across. Make it nice looking, but also noticeable. And if we do go with something, you know, hopefully we can put state law must stop with people in the area. Other than that, I'm gonna go enjoy the sunshine, and I'll catch you guys on YouTube later. Thank you very much.
All right. On to committee reports. Greg?
Well, the Finance Committee did meet. We're gonna have a number of items coming before council tonight. The one that we're gonna, that I'll discuss more at length was the comprehensive plan, so I'll be glad to discuss that later, but I think, I don't think there's anything to discuss specifically until it comes up in council tonight.
Brett, do you have anything?
Public service. Public service. Yeah. Look at this. The Parks and Rec report.
Do you have anything you wanna bring up?
From public service, we talked about the need to get a control on vandalism and the inappropriate behavior going on at parks. There's legislation coming tonight, and along with the next meeting, that are kind of go hand in hand, try to put stop to that.
Rich?
Okay, we had Public Safety Service Committee meeting on five thirteen. All my committee members were present. Minutes of the April ninth meeting were approved as written. Chief Nickel gave his police report. Mr. Stahl will give that. Chief Eads gave the fire department report. Mr. McDaniel will give that. Under Safety Service Director, got a few items here. Last year, we did a vacation of an alley on Tolent Street, and that needs to be updated because of utilities, mainly Columbia Gas. So, be some revised legislation will probably come next council meeting. Mr. Hitt will be sponsoring that legislation. Tonight, you have nine eleven legislation that is on the agenda, has to be completed by June third. Mr. Stahl will be sponsoring this. It's Resolution one thirty-eight twenty-four, and it does have emergency legislation on Planning Commission gave approval, seventy lots for London Landing Phase Three. That is Resolution one thirty-seven dash twenty-four, and Mr. Hitt is sponsoring that. We discussed putting up crosswalk lights at Main and Park by Cowling Park. We also talked about the marking of lanes on North Main Street. After discussion, the committee decided to not do these projects because of all the expenses involved at this time. We also talked about, there's no sidewalks out by, past the hospital on the right-hand side of the road going out. There were some figures discussed, but no action was taken. And we did talk about the ward redistricting. We've got a meeting set up. There's a couple of dates out for that. And that basically that was about it, and we adjourned at six fifty-four. Next meeting will be June eleventh at six o'clock in the conference room.
Andy?
I attended the Finance Committee meeting. Just overall, the month-to-date revenue exceeded expenses plus the overall year-to-date revenue exceeded expenses, so fiscally it appears like we're in good shape. We did talk about pickleball a little bit as far as the location possibly on Walnut Street and the cost of installing security cameras and electric over there. The next meeting for finances, June tenth at five thirty in the meeting room next door. And then I also attended the Public Service Committee meeting, and we talked about ward boundaries, and Michael Norman emailed around the possibility of having a work session to discuss that, to try to even up numbers on various wards. And we discussed the parade route. The Strawberry Festival Committee has decided that the parade route they came up with was satisfactory. We talked about striping on Main Street and the crosswalk, which was also discussed in safety, and we talked about cat issues, and some legislation will be coming forward tonight related to that. And we talked about park vandalism, and there'll be some legislation for that tonight also. And the next Public Service Committee meeting is June eleventh at five o'clock in the meeting room next door. That's it.
Shannon, do you have anything?
I do not.
John?
I had a police report in the Public Safety meeting. They have two open sworn positions that they are reviewing, eleven applications that were served by their civil service. They still have, they still will accept lateral applications. One candidate is currently in the Basic Academy and will be available for field training in late July. Sergeant Joe Cox will be retiring in June after twenty years of service with LPD. Our K nine continues to train for certification. They have selected another Belgian Malinois, a two-year-old named Sento. They purchased an unmarked vehicle from Cogdemotive from capital funds approved earlier this year. They're working to get some basic equipment installed on it. Detective Frank White was removed from participation in the Franklin County Drug Task Force to concentrate more in the Madison County area and assist on our one investigator with a recently increased caseload. He could rejoin the task force in the future. The city administration has received a package to complete the administration of the federal funding award from the USDA, the Rural Development Agency, towards the construction of a police facility. There's also the implication that alone will be sought through the same agency for the remainder of the project cost. It has to be bought before the Finance Committee in the near future once the package is completed. They participated in Ward Three meeting, the LMS Life Fair, the Senior Citizens Fair, LES Second Grade Field Tour, Field Day Tours. Chief Nickel, Sergeant Harris, Sergeant Cooper attended the annual OACF Chiefs in Service Training Conference. They have handled two thousand forty-six calls of service, four hundred twenty-one incident reports for the first four months of twenty-four, with four hundred and five traffic stops initiated. Noticeable incidents, LPD units on shift assisted West Jeff Police Department with the recent active shooter at the Amazon facility on State Route twenty-nine on May twelfth. Often, the units responded to cover calls for service to city where the shift units were unavailable. On May twelfth, after the Amazon incident, the same shift responded to Cowling Park on the port of juveniles with a firearm and a white. No firearm was displayed or observed by anyone, and it was determined no firearm existed. Two juveniles were later located that were involved, and charges were filed for the disturbance. Later, that same shift on May twelfth, another individual was reported to have displayed a handgun to friends in the park next to the skating and basketball courts. An eighteen-year-old Dayton male was located with a CO2-powered BB handgun and was arrested for possession of the item in the park. It was a realistic-looking revolver, however, it was not a firearm. Over the past three weeks, three juveniles and one adult have been charged with misdemeanor crimes related to damaging items taken from the hope boxes located in the park. That's all I have.
Michael?
So, I attended the Public Service Committee meeting, and I am giving a street before, but before I do, I just want to follow up a little bit on the Parks and Rec report. I know everybody out there, I hear it every year, when is the pool opening? May twenty-fifth is the pool opening. So, just so it's out there. I just want to get that out, because it's always a big question on Facebook. But as for the Street Department, once again, we've got a five-page report from our superintendent of the Street Department, very busy. Just, I just highlighted a few things. They met with the county about the spending of the ward grant, third ward grant. They're hoping to get that started and finished by the end of August. There were some lights that they needed to be fixed on Second Street. They had to shut down the road behind this, or across from us down there for the Columbia Gas Project by Mandy's Day Care over in that area on Union Street. They've been working, talking about the pool being open. They were working on some piping at the pool. The crosswalk at High and Union was the topic for repair, and also, it was mentioned that we have some, we have some people playing with the crosswalk there at High and, High and Union to stop the traffic, and then they don't go across, so there's some playing going on there. So, we did talk about that, so anybody out there, you know, kind of lay off. They also did a little bit more work on the CBG grant, talked to ODAT about the state route changes that we're hoping will happen soon. The road study for paving and repairing the road is done. There were some repairs done to tornado sirens. They got the mosquito spray schedule. Hopefully, this year it won't be the same night as the fireworks. Trying to, they're also trying to TV the sewer. We have a camera that goes down and shows what our sewers look like. They're trying to get that done, and they were over on Center Street. I would say that please be careful when they're out doing that, because that, most of those manholes are right in the middle of the road, and I know, I travel Center Street a lot, and, you know, they had it all marked out, but I saw some near misses because people weren't paying attention, and although they had the cones and they're in vests and they're bright and there's a big truck there, I seen a couple of people almost whack a couple of our workers. And then he gave us a list of Street Department vehicles and equipment to let us know what he has, and there's about six items on here that within the next one to four years that are going to have to be replaced. So, he kind of gave us a head up, heads up on what he's gonna need in the future. But other than that, I think kudos to our Street Department, and that's it.
All right, thank you.
Mr. President?
Yes?
I think, I think Mr. McDaniel still needed a...
Oh.
I had the fire report. I had two committees.
When I come to you, just whatever you have.
Both of them.
Yeah, just do them both.
I had enough of them, one at a time.
Nope, just do it all.
All right. Well, I have the chief's report here for the Fire Department. They completed ground and aerial ladder testing, completed hose testing, installed several smoke detectors in residential homes. They hosted London City Schools Elementary Tour and Safety Talk, completed a Medicare ground ambulance data collection system survey. They hosted several students for ride time for Tolls and Grant Paramedic Class, and it completed a departmental fire training, drivers and ladder training, departmental EMS training, hospital capabilities and services through Madison Health, and also the departmental EMS training with unusual neurological emergencies through Ohio Health. So, that's all I got there.
All right, thank you. On to city official reports.
All right. Good evening. Thanks to everyone for coming out. I will start this how I ended the last one, which is mow. Mow your lawns. Please mow your lawns. Please pick up the trash in your yard. Please mow the right-of-ways on your property. Please mow. Please mow. On Friday, May third, we hosted the London Elementary School's second grade class and other kids from around our community for the COSI STEAM event. We are great partners with COSI, and the event coincided with their big science celebration, which was held on the fourth at COSI. That Councilman Norman was also out. It was a nice day, except for the rain. But both days were a success and fun events that helped grow the interest of kids to explore science, technology, engineering, arts, and math, STEAM. So, I want to thank COSI for all their support and the partnership. We have received the federal grant paperwork for construction of the new police department. The City Hall team is working hard to get, to complete the paperwork, and this will be further discussed at the next Finance Committee meeting. I was able to attend a couple of events over the past couple of weeks. Junior Achievement had their Hall of Fame dinner. I want to congratulate all their award recipients. Very well-deserving of that honor, and want to thank them for all they do for their communities. I spent a day at Madison Plains High School, talking about my job as mayor and job opportunities in government. This was organized by Tolls Career and Technical Center Satellite Instructor. Today is a local downtown shop hop, if you guys were out and about. E-merge had me come pop by and judge their kids' coloring contest, so that was fun. If you have never made it to a downtown shop hop in our beautiful historic downtown, you are definitely missing out, and I urge everyone to go down there and check those out. The past two weeks, I've been able to attend three chamber commerce ribbon cuttings for businesses here in London. Small-town scoops and ADL appliances had their grand openings, and then Rent to Own had their grand reopening. The number of new businesses coming into London is really amazing. This retail growth only seems to be on the rise, and it's a very exciting time for London. We have been having some issues at our parks, especially Cowling Park with unruly juveniles. We want our parks to be enjoyable by everyone, so everyone can have a great experience. We do not want unmannered kids that need to be raised better ruining our citizens' park enjoyment. With that being said, I appreciate working with the City Council and the Parks and Rec Department to come up with that plan. So, I'm excited to see Resolution one thirty-six twenty-four come before City Council tonight. This resolution is increasing appropriations for recreation assistant. The seasonal park assistant will be employed from May first till September thirtieth. That's about twenty-two weeks, and I know we're past May first, but this will be moving on also into the future. And they'll work about thirty-two to forty hours a week. Their main duty will be park security, covering Cowling Park, Merrimack Park, the basketball courts, ballfields, dog park, and our new community gardens. And they will have a direct line of communication with the London Police Department. We spoke to Chief Nickel today about that. They will also serve as a city representative for public relations, just going around and talking to people while they're at the park. And while at the park, they will assist in maintenance, including trash and debris pickup, beautification, restroom maintenance and upkeep, helping out with the ballfields, when people reserve the park, helping assist with that, and then other duties as needed. Now, on to a very intriguing story about a hero. Twenty-two-year-old London, Ohio native, James Mara, flew in one of the deadliest missions during World War II dubbed Operation Tidal Wave. On August first, nineteen forty-three, a crew of ten took their position inside their B-24 Liberator bomber plane and headed to the, to a Romanian city. The goal was to attack a fuel depot in Romania known as Hitler's Gas Station. Mara, a second lieutenant, flew in the back of the large flying formation of seventy-seven B-24s from Libya. As they began to approach, they were flying two hundred feet off the ground, and they dropped their payload of bombs. The bombs hit their target, but flying in such low altitude, they became easy targets for the German gunmen on the ground. The plane that Mara was in fell to the ground and burst into flames. The low altitude only allowed three of his crew members to parachute out of the plane and survive. On August third, twenty twenty-three, the Defense POW MIA Accounting Agency called his family with the news that they never thought would come. They had found James Mara's remains. The family had long known Mara was dead, but his mother wrote letters constantly to the government and Ohio lawmakers in Washington, asking them to find her son's remains and bring him home. Nearly eighty-one years after Mara lost his life, the family is now celebrating the news that they can finally have a funeral for this hometown hero. Thanks to DNA evidence, the military was able to match her remains, including leg bones and a jawbone, with DNA from living relatives. The military awarded the family his Purple Heart and Distinguished Flying Cross. James Mara is now coming home to be laid to rest. So, it's a little bit of information about that. There will be a procession into London Friday, May seventeenth, which is tomorrow. Lieutenant Mara's remains will be arriving at the Columbus Airport around five oh five PM. They'll be led by OSP from there. They'll exit I seventy, onto State Route one forty-two, and come into West Jefferson. The Sheriff's Department will be waiting for them right off the exit and will join the procession there, then go into West Jeff, where West Jeff will pick them up and join the procession. Then the LPD will join the procession, as well as London Fire Department around Spring Valley and the Honey Farm, and they, and they will bring them into, into London. They will park a hearse in front of Lynch Family Funeral Home, where the honor guard will be acting as pallbearers, bringing Lieutenant Mara into the funeral home. So, his funeral service is going to be here at City Hall, and that's Saturday, May twenty-fifth, so next Saturday. From eleven thirty to twelve thirty will be visitations here, with the funeral service being at twelve thirty. Immediately following the service, honor guard will place Lieutenant Mara into a hearse, which will be parked out in front of City Hall facing north on Walnut Street. They will begin the procession, which will turn left onto High Street, and head out of town to Kirkwood Cemetery. So, I just wanted to get that information out, especially because there was an error in the Madison Messenger. They kept saying Memorial Day, and that information was wrong. It's going to be on Saturday, the twenty-fifth. And then tomorrow, if you're out and about, I am, you know, you can come back here and park behind the building, and, because they'll be going to Lynch Family Funeral Home, I would assume any, they'd arrive somewhere probably between five thirty, six fifteen, somewhere in there. I want to skip the fun fact this week. Instead, I want to talk about a great young man. Sean Sobolski passed away this past Sunday. Sean lost his battle with cancer. Sean lost his battle with cancer, but his determination and strength impacted so many. He was a great young man that had a heart of gold and brought love into every room that he walked into. Every time I saw him, he'd come up and we would talk. He was always able to brighten my day and put a smile on my face. Sean will be missed by our community, but he will never be forgotten, as he has touched so many lives. This Sunday, May 19th, there will be a procession from Lynch Family Funeral Home around 2:00 PM out to London High School. There will be calling hours at London High School, starting at 3:00, with the service beginning at 6:00 PM. London will always be impacted by Sean Strong, and he will always have a special play, place in my heart. So I'd ask for a moment of silence to remember Sean. Thank you, guys. That's all I have.
Rex, do you have anything?
I don't have anything right now. If any questions about some of the legislation comes up, I can address it then.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I'd like to ask the Safe Service Director a question. Mr. Norman had brought this up about the, the pedestrian crossings, the crosswalks. And I had contacted you a couple of weeks ago, because it seemed like one was malfunctioning. Are we having problems with those generally? And, and if so, are they under warranty?
Yes, we've been having trouble with the crosswalks mechanisms. And no, I don't think they're under warranty anymore.
Okay.
But we, you know, whenever we're notified of them, the street department goes out and inspects them if they are able to take care of it, they do. If not, they call the company out to address the problem.
Okay. Thank you for the update.
Okay, on to old business. Tabled legislation. Motion to read by title and number?
So moved.
Second.
Resolution 123-24, sponsored by Michael Norman, a resolution authorizing the order to increase appropriations and transfer funds.
Okay, so the resolution, pretty self-explanatory. It was presented so that we could make sure that our fire and EMS division is funded. We did have finance meetings, and it looks as though he's funded for now. I asked that, I originally asked it to be postponed. We ended up tabling it. I raised a concern at the last meeting, that tabling is not the proper thing we need to do. And the president asked if I'd follow up with our law director, so I did. I sent the following email to her, or our law director, I'm sorry, Jennifer Hitt. And I've said, during the last council, there was discussion. Could you please clarify the following? Tabling legislation versus postponing to a later date. In my readings, the purpose of tabling is meant to be done during a single meeting, and that if carried over to the next meeting, an action must be taken or tabled, or the item dies. A tabled item, dead means if it comes back, you have to start from the beginning. Postponing to a later date keeps the legislation alive for action to be taken on a later date without having to start the process over. In this instance, we're talking about basically funding the chief of, of our fire department that if later in the year he does need funding for whatever reason, we would have to start that over. But if we postpone it, he would be able to come through the meeting, say, hey, here's the amount I needed. All we'd need to do is amend the amount, adopt, and the chief would have his money basically the next day. Her answer to this, her response, the council rules adopted for this term allow for five motions on pending matter. To adjourn, lay on the table, to postpone for a certain day, to amend, to refer back to committee. My understanding of Robert's rules is when an item is tabled, it does need to be addressed at the next meeting, or it dies. In the past, council has placed the item on the agenda and addressed it at each following council, as the, whether there would be further discussion or table it again. I believe that addressing it would keep it alive, and it would not have to start over from the beginning unless it dies from not being addressed. This rule also allows for the motion to postpone for a certain day. That motion seems perfectly appropriate if you want to set aside the issue until a certain date in the future. Council rules do not allow for motion to postpone indefinitely, so you would have to have a certain date to bring it back. Council has historically used motion to table, so that may be why it was questioned. I do not have an issue with using either motion. So that's, that was your answer. So that being said, I would like to make a motion to postpone this legislation until September 19th, 2024.
I'll second.
Councilman Stahl?
Yes.
You got a question from the mayor?
I believe you have made a motion to take it off of the table.
Thank you.
And make a motion to postpone for whatever date.
Okay. I'm sorry. I make a motion, we take it off the table, please.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Stahl?
Yes.
Councilman Hitt?
Yes.
Councilman McDaniel's?
Yes.
Councilman Norman?
Yes.
Councilwoman Traynor?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilman Eads?
Yes.
Now I'd like to make a motion that we postpone this legislation until September 19th, 2024. So moved.
Okay. Uh, Councilman Norman?
Yes.
Councilman Eads?
Yes.
Councilman Stahl?
Yes.
Councilman McDaniel's?
Yes.
Councilwoman Traynor?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilman Hitt?
Yes.
All right, Resolution 123-24 has been postponed to September 19th. Onto third reading, ordinance 124-24. Again, motion to read by title and number?
So moved.
Second.
This, oh, go ahead, sorry. Ordinance 124-24, sponsored by Shannon Traynor, and ordinance dissolving the Board of Public Utilities.
This is, yeah, continuing with the transition to Mid-Ohio, this is dissolving the BPU as their functions right now are of all but transfer. This is just part of the remaining sort of ends that need to be tied off.
Any further discussion?
Is there an emergency clause on it?
This is a third reading.
This, yes.
I know, there is one? Okay. I just didn't know if it was going to take effect immediately, or is there a third?
I think that was to do with payroll.
Right, that's what I, this one made sure. Thank you.
All right. For council's wishes?
Make a motion to adopt.
Second.
Councilman Hitt?
Yes.
Councilwoman Traynor?
Yes.
Councilman Stahl?
Yes.
Councilman Norman?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilman McDaniel's?
Yes.
Councilman Eads?
Yes.
Okay, ordinance 124-24 is passed. Onto ordinance 125-24. Again, motion to read by title and number?
So moved.
Second.
Ordinance 125-24, Shannon Traynor, and ordinance approving and authorizing the execution and delivery of a community reinvestment area agreement.
This is more purchases from the Westwood Collective. This is relative to the Madison Messenger Building, and we've got 60, or 78 Southeast Street, fixing the property tax at the current rate. There's no emergency clause on this, on this measure, as there's none needed. Taxing season is, it wouldn't be effective until next year, anyway.
Mr. President, I believe we have someone here to speak tonight, or could speak tonight.
Yeah, I can.
We'll need to get your mic. Here. Do that one. Okay. It'll say zero, and then it'll have three more.
Hi there. My name's Mike Ford. I'm a part of the, the investor group, and I'm just here to answer any questions, concerns, or anything you guys might have.
I'm sorry, Mike, what was your last name?
Ford. Makes it easy.
My last name's Nora.
Any questions or?
So we did, we did have a, it's been brought up, you're here tonight, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna put you to use for a minute.
Yeah, might as well.
So, so the projects that have already been put in place, would you like to give us some updates, as, as you know those to be?
Yeah, so we just finished up the eight residential units, where now we have tenants living, shopping, eating in London. We have seven of the commercial units leased out right now. Believe, we're working on a few other ones right now. So I'm actually in the construction field, so I'm actually doing labor in the building, so I'm boots on the ground, I guess you could say, but, um, but yeah, so, uh, right now I believe we're working with a coffee shop on getting them in the new building at 78. And then, yeah, so we have Hartschler Dairy down at 22, which they're working through, getting open. We have the, the Realtors Office that just recently opened, and I believe we're working on 110 Garage right now, which is gonna kind of be our home base, where we'll have, you know, our, our personnel on the ground.
Are you gonna have a permanent office there?
Um, you know, I don't fully know. So Cole Antle, he works with the Westwood day in, day out. I don't know if we'll be down there permanently, but I know we're getting set up with, for him to be there, you know, part-time.
Okay.
So.
Any further updates on the hotel?
Uh, no, so right now, as we're, as we're finishing all these commercial projects, at one, on the first story, we're shifting to an Airbnb, you know, travel destination up above 116, 122, I believe is gonna start to be our focus. And then as interest rates drop and the cost of money comes down, we're planning on getting into the hotel, which, that's, that's a heavy lift, so obviously, you know, money being a little cheaper would probably help.
And specifically for 78, what do you expect to happen there?
Um, so we're actually...
Do you have work that you need to do there?
Yeah, so the, the three existing tenants, we're, we've been working with them, prioritizing lowering their rent, so they stay here in London. And then we're in talks with a copy shop, coffee shop slash bakery, adding them in there. So. It's pretty exciting stuff. Like I said, I've been boots on the ground, I'm, I'm a flooring contractor, so we've been doing all the flooring stuff and, you know, getting to talk to the locals, and I know the barber shop, Tino, he's, he's very happy, so, you know, it's a pretty cool project to be a part of.
Mm-hmm. You guys are doing a great job, let me tell you.
Yeah, well, I appreciate it.
You're a lot of good, positive comments.
Yeah.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, it was no, it's no easy lift, and like I said, I mean, met with you, you know, way back, and with the football team came and helped, as, you know, um, oh, you know, not fundraiser, but their community service came and helped, and so, um, yeah, it's been a really cool project. I'm excited.
Anything else? Thanks for coming out.
Yep, I appreciate it.
Thanks, sir.
All right, what are council's wishes?
Make a motion to adopt.
Second.
I'm sorry, the phone just came on, I didn't hear the second. John?
John.
John.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilman McDaniel's?
Yes.
Councilman Eads?
Yes.
Councilman Hitt?
Yes.
Councilwoman Traynor?
Yes.
Councilman Stahl?
Yes.
Councilman Norman?
Yes.
Okay, ordinance 125-24 is passed. Onto Resolution 126-24. Again, motion to read by title and number?
So moved.
Second.
Resolution 126-24, sponsored by Andrew Hitt, a resolution adopting the recommendations of the planning commission.
So this is London Landing Phase 2. It's an addition of six lots to that phase. It runs right along the state property. And then it's a public hearing next, council meeting, June 6th.
Yeah, I had a question. The original plot they give us, that was already included in it. And then they bring that along, but then the next one's gonna be over here, and a whole bunch left out. We missed something, or what?
The map that was brought with the legislation was, remember I said that they gave us an incorrect map when they came to planning? They had to readjust it to match their, their petition that they brought in front of planning was for 66. The map that they brought had the 72 on it, so those should have been marked off of what came to council. Building and zoning just gave us the wrong map when they forwarded the petition. So there was only 66. That's, and then that's why they're only asking for six. Rather than stop and wait till another meeting for planning and slow up the process for the 66 lots, they went ahead and crossed those off of the map that they had to match the request, and now they're just asking for the remaining six to finish that section off.
It seemed confusing.
It was very, it, it was. It had something to do with their, what is he, architect, engineer? He wasn't on the same page with the developer.
And their numbers didn't follow from this onto the other.
What?
I mean, if you follow the big map we got originally, the house, a lot of numbers didn't follow.
Yeah, he, he, those all, those, those changed also, yes. When they changed it from, instead of one big development, when he started doing them, phase one, phase two, phase three, he renumbered them, yeah.
So they skipping one section up here, because this next one is coming up in a little while?
That, that would be the final phase, yes.
The final phase?
Yep. Are you asking, would you say why?
This one isn't the final phase. There'll be another phase yet after this one?
There'll be more houses after that.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. And again, there will be a public hearing scheduled for June 6th on this resolution. So keep that one on. Onto Resolution 128-24. Again, motion to read by title and number?
So moved.
Second.
Resolution 128-24, sponsored by Greg Eads, a resolution increasing appropriations.
So the fire department did put an exhaust system in two separate buildings. This actually applies to one of the buildings. We did receive the grant reimbursement for that exhaust system in the amount of $37,180. This just allows us to put the money back into their fire complex building maintenance fund to be used as needed.
What are council's wishes?
My motion to adopt.
Second.
Councilwoman Traynor?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilman Stahl?
Yes.
Councilman McDaniel's?
Yes.
Councilman Hitt?
Yes.
Councilman Norman?
Yes.
Councilman Eads?
Yes.
Resolution 128-24 is passed. Onto Resolution 129-24. Again, motion to read by title and number?
So moved.
Second.
Resolution 129-24, sponsored by Michael Norman, a resolution increasing appropriations.
This is the resolution to purchase and install, as it currently reads, a sign outside of City Hall. It's a, it's for the citizens, informational, for the citizens, it'll have, I mean, you name it, it can go on there. Any community events, any amber alerts, things like that. So that's what it's about. But I would like to make a motion to amend it. Can I do that? I'd like to, I'd like to amend it to say, whereas council would like to purchase and install and take out the location. I think that's something that I would, I think the administration, the street department, whoever takes care of that, they should be able to figure that out, where it goes. We don't have to designate where they put it, but we want to give them the money so that they can put up the signs. I rambled on, didn't I? So my motion is, I would like to amend this to say, whereas council would like to purchase and install.
Councilman Norman, so we're just gonna take the two out and put in, and council would like to purchase a digital sign and install outside of City Hall?
We, yeah, we want to get rid of the...
We're gonna strike the words outside of City Hall?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we want to eliminate the location, we just want to allow them to purchase and install.
Okay.
install, and they can decide where, at a later time.
Is there a second?
Second.
Brett's second.
Brett's second. Councilman Hitt?
Uh, yes.
Councilman McDaniel's?
Yes.
Councilman Stahl?
Yes.
Councilwoman Traynor?
Yes.
Councilman Norman?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
I got a question. Um, we're striking, yes, make it, council would like to purchase a digital sign to install, period, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Or are we gonna install?
Well, in the last meeting, we, we, we originally had City Hall, but in the last meeting, it came up that there might be a better location. And I don't want to get into the, the pickleball situation where we spend several meetings, pickleball here, pickleball there. So I don't want to go, sign here, sign there. I want to give them the ability to purchase the sign, and they can decide where it goes. Because we really, I mean, it's really not up to us where it goes, council. We're just giving them the, the money so that they can put up a sign somewhere. I trust their judgment.
Okay, I wasn't here, I was on vacation last council meeting, so that's why I had the question.
No, no problem.
Uh, I'll vote yes.
Councilman Eads?
Yes.
Does the administration want a sign?
I would say a sign would be nice if it's in the right location. Um, and, and that's what was talked about. Um, and we can still have those discussions. I mean, I appreciate, you know, you, uh, doing what council does, appropriate the money, and then we make those decisions. But if anybody has a place they think would be best, please let me know. I mean, you know, we're in it together, so, for sure.
No.
What are council's wishes?
Well, okay.
If you got more discussion?
Nope, 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 nope. Because that's just, I was just gonna say, so the, uh, the amendments passed, right. But you've already assumed that, so go on. So I make a motion, we adopt. There we go. That was painful.
Second.
Is that Stahl?
Yes.
You can't see him anymore. Um, Councilman Eads?
Yes.
Council McDaniel's?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilman Hitt?
Yes.
Councilwoman Traynor?
Yes.
Councilman Stahl?
Yes.
Councilman Norman?
Yes.
Okay, resolution 129 dash 24 is passed. On to new business, resolution 130 dash 24, can I get a motion to read by title and number?
Seven. Second.
Resolution 130 dash 24, sponsored by Andrew Hitt, a resolution increasing appropriations.
So this kind of goes along with the earlier legislation that Mr. Eads presented, except this, uh, applies to the exhaust system at the main fire department building, in the amount of $63,371. And it's for the exhaust system.
This is just a reimbursement, right?
Right.
Does this one have the emergency clause on it?
Yeah.
Okay, I knew one of them did, I just, because it's such a high amount, like-
Right.
Okay.
Make a motion that we suspend the three reading rule on it.
I'll second.
Um, who haven't I not picked on yet? Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilman Hitt?
Yes.
Councilwoman Traynor?
Yes.
Councilman McDaniel's?
Yes.
Councilman Stahl?
Yes.
Councilman Eads?
Yes.
Councilman Norman?
Yes.
Make a motion to adopt.
So.
Y'all are confusing me. Okay. I have, I heard Stahl and Hitt.
That's fine.
Good enough.
That's good enough. We're not going bigger. There'll be, there's plenty more, trust me.
Yeah. Um, Councilman Norman?
Yes.
Councilman Stahl?
Yes.
Councilwoman Traynor?
Yes.
Councilman Hitt?
Yes.
Councilman McDaniel's?
Yes.
Councilman Eads?
Yes.
Resolution 130 dash 24 is passed. On to resolution 131 dash 24, can I get a motion to read by title and number?
Seven. Second.
Resolution 131 dash 24, sponsored by Andrew Hitt, a resolution increasing appropriations.
So this is money that would need to be moved in order to pay, or help pay for the Marx System, which is a multi-area radio communication system, which is used by the fire department to, um, dispatch, I believe, to various areas. Uh, it's an amount of $900.
Is there an emergency clause on this one?
No.
Any further discussion on this? Okay. On to resolution 132 dash 24, can I get a motion to read by title and number?
Seven. Second.
Resolution 132 dash 24, sponsored by Shannon Traynor, a resolution increasing appropriations.
Uh, this is, uh, coupled with the next resolution down the line, also increasing appropriations. This is regarding some, um, roadwork that was accomplished by the state. Some of that roadwork was contained within the city limits. Um, part of this was something that occurred in 2019. Funds were expended in 2019 and 2024. The city received a bill for essentially cost overruns. Their, uh, their portion of that, of funds after the, um, I believe it was the federal government paid the 80%, their 20% amounts to $15,278.60, which is the next, um, the next resolution. So we had the, the red, red and concert, these two motions, uh, the two resolutions are one to appropriate the funds, and then next to allow the, or the auditor to, uh, uh, remit a warrant to the state of Ohio for those expenditures, made a bill.
So here in the discussion, go on to the next one, resolution 133 dash 24, can I get a motion to read by title and number?
Seven. Second.
Resolution 133 dash 24, sponsored by Shannon Traynor, a resolution authorizing the auditor's warrant for payment.
Again, it's the bill we got from the state for the roadwork. It can stay on, it took them four years to bill us.
Okay. Resolution 133 dash 24, can I get a motion to read by title and number?
134.
Or 134 dash 24.
Seven. Second.
Resolution 134 dash 24, sponsored by Greg Eads, a resolution increasing appropriations.
Okay, so, last year during council meetings, I think it was probably brought up a couple times that we don't have a, a valid or usable comprehensive plan. It's been many years since we've had one. To their credit, the administration started to do some research, I believe, back in December, and got some, some information in January. Um, that's just to say that they, they, they looked around to see what the prices might be at that time. Um, we had, um, discussed, but the approval was not needed for the Safety Service Director to put out a request for qualifications. He did do that, we've received three qualifications. And I'm gonna give people a little bit of an update, since this is, you know, people can watch this. Um, when Mr. Castle put this out, the scope of work included nine things. I'm letting you guys all know this, you may not have seen this. Uh, the first was land use planning, second was transportation, third was economic development, the fourth part was housing, the fifth part was environmental sustainability, number six was community engagement, number seven was implementation framework, number eight is parks and recreation, and number nine is agriculture. So we've discussed this a little bit, we might be able to fold agriculture into land use planning, there may be some other things that happened. Um, but when Mr. Castle put this out, he did get three proposals from companies. Um, there were three members of council that were invited to have a discussion about that, that was, uh, President Peters, Councilman Norman, and myself. We were able to sit with Mr. Castle and, and discuss these, and brought up a few questions, um, during those meetings. Um, so we did have the three proposals. Uh, we discussed it once, we looked it over, we took some time to look things over, and in that time, uh, Mr. Castle had reached out to, um, the Mid-Ohio Regional Planning Commission, uh, because they said they could actually help with this. Um, so we did choose a company, the, the three of us did choose a company. Um, it goes by OHM, which, I don't remember the name, it's in here, and I might find it in a minute. Uh, there it is, Orchard, Hiltz, and McClement Incorporated. They have many locations. Um, their primary office in Ohio is in Westerville. Uh, there was a list of projects they have done, and their, their price, first of all, I, their scope of work met what we, we asked for. Secondly, their price was $82,500 to complete this. Uh, the second proposal, uh, was Structure Point, I believe theirs was right around $122,000. Uh, one was 122, one was over $130,000. Um, we, we honestly did discuss the, the proposals in the group of people that they had, to the experts that are involved. And we were, we were pretty, uh, pretty satisfied with OHM, that they have the, the experts that we would want to use and to help facilitate this. Um, so there's gonna be, once this gets rolling, they're gonna set up, um, a community survey for people to do. There, we're gonna have, uh, meetings with the community as all this moves forward. And we've added a little additional money because, uh, Mid-Ohio Regional Planning Commission, they threw four, four different numbers at us for levels of things that they might help with. They actually topped out about, about $8,000, so we're really probably at about $90,000, but we wanted a little bit extra here. So I'm proud to sponsor this, because I think this is a necessary thing for the cities, we move forward, to look at how we're going to, how we're gonna grow, how we're gonna do this in the proper manner, how we're gonna work on our streets, do parks and recreations, you know, how, how are we gonna advance our, our own parks, housing, they're gonna look at housing, what's the need for housing, not just the, the 300 or 400,000 dollar houses, and the potential of 800,000 dollar houses that I heard about at Planning Commission, but also maybe some lower-priced houses that will fit our community better. So I'm proud to sponsor this. Uh, this is going to allow us, in the next piece, uh, this will allow us to appropriate the money of up to $99,000, so that we can start this process.
Is there an emergency clause on?
No, there's not. And I would like, I personally would like to leave it on until the next meeting, just because this will be the first time many people have heard about this.
Okay, we'll leave that on.
Nothing's cheapest.
No. On to resolution 135 dash 24, can I get a motion to read by title and number?
Seven. Second.
Resolution 135 dash 24, sponsored by Greg Eads, a resolution authorizing the Safety Service Director to enter into contract with OHM.
So again, this will allow Safety Service Tractor to enter into contract, not to exceed $82,500, which was OHM's part of this. Do we need another piece of legislation, um, or not, for the Mid-Ohio Regional Planning Commission? Because this only, uh, this only allows you to spend $82,500, out of the 99,000, we're gonna appropriate.
Yeah, the only reason we had the 82.5 is because it exceeds 50,000, so we have to have council approval, the others below 50, so we do not need council approval.
Okay.
So, yeah.
No, for entering it.
Okay, we'll leave that one on as well. Um, on to resolution 136 dash 24, can I get a motion to read by title and number?
Seven. Second.
Resolution 136 dash 24, sponsored by Brett McDaniel's, a resolution increasing appropriations.
Yes, this resolution will be going hand in hand with, uh, another one coming at the next, uh, meeting, to, uh, make the park safe, and have more, uh, people patrol them. Sort of like an ambassador deal.
I have a question, that I was asked, actually. Um, in the, in the description, because I was talking to someone about it, and I know the description isn't out there, but I had shared it with them on what the, uh, responsibilities of this personnel person is. Isn't that what we're talking about here?
Yes.
Increasing personnel. Um, during the pickleball debate, um, one of the places, the locations that was mentioned, was over here, um, where we used to have the blah, blah, blah. We couldn't do it, because that's not a designated park area. So if we appropriate this money and this personnel is overseeing the garden that's out there, is that park?
It's, so-
I mean, I know it's just a small part of it, but I, I just don't want to-
Yeah. So, well, the first thing is, is that, and other duties as needed, right? So, the gardens are being done with the help of Parks and Recreation, but that's not a park, right?
I get it.
Yeah.
I just want to make sure that we're not in, moving funds to a situation where we shouldn't be using those funds.
No.
Because that's not a park area.
The issue with the pickleball court over here is we were using Parks and Playground Fund pretty heavily, and that has-
That, 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 that.
No, that's fine, I just, okay, I just wanted to make sure that I don't, because I don't want to get down the road and we hit a speed bump, right? So, so.
Mr. President? Go ahead.
No, go ahead.
I've just gonna make a motion to suspend the three reading rule on this, because we need to get him, get him going.
Before we do that, I, I have a couple of questions, if you don't mind. Uh, do we need a, is there a job description that, and if so, does it have to be approved by anyone?
Well, first, first, before, there's a motion on the table. So, so, there's a motion on the table, somebody can, someone can second it, and then you can discuss again. But there's a motion on the table.
Or, or it can die for lack of a second.
If we can move forward.
Yep, yep, okay, so there's, there's a motion, and then a second to suspend by Michael. And now you can discuss again. Roberts lets you do that.
Um, this person will be hired as a recreation assistant, only the, the position will just be seasonal. There's already a job description for a rec assistant, so, under the classification, other, just, other responsibilities assigned by the recreation director will be the things that we've discussed. So we don't have to create a whole new job description for a seasonal employee. It's just, so we're just gonna use the current job description for a rec assistant.
What was the amount again?
20,000.
20,000.
Now-
I'm sorry, was that an hourly, or is that a salary position?
So, um, how we came up with that number was 32 to 40 hours a week, so that'd be a maximum of 880 hours, and that would be for the full, when we go May to September 30th. So at $20 an hour, that would be a maximum of 17,600, and then we just made it 20, just in case. Because we have to, right, you have to, we still have to pay into PERS. Um, it won't be insurance, but you still have to pay into pension.
And whoever you hire for this will be running the ambassador program that's coming?
That, that, yeah, that was still to be discussed, but that's what was discussed at the meeting, is we would, if, if you guys want to do the ambassador program, we would want somebody in place to help with that, because they would be the ones working the parks like we- to help with that because they would be the ones working the parks like we talked about.
I just have one more question. So during the meeting, and we just said it again, we're going to pay someone twenty dollars an hour to do this. You know, I went home, and it kind of bugs me that we're going to pay someone twenty dollars to do, I don't, I don't think this is a very, I don't think there's much, a whole lot of labor in this. I don't think there's, I think we're overpaying. When, when the average person in town makes fifteen eighty-nine, I think we should try to stay closer to that, to that range. And I know it's, I know it's seasonal, and I know there, you might have issues with hiring people in because it's only that little short. But twenty dollars just seems like a lot.
Well, I think where we came up with that number is, is that we want to be able to get somebody good, right? Walmart's starting out at eighteen dollars. I just saw Sheetz is starting out at eighteen dollars. I went there today and got gas on my way in from Springfield. So you're talking about someone working a retail job, and this person is going to have to probably get yelled at a little bit, right? When them kids are unruly and they're trying, you know, so, you know, in our eyes, you pay for what you get, right? And so we didn't think twenty dollars an hour was out of the realm when you could go to a fast food place with experience and probably get twenty dollars an hour.
Well, I just want to make sure we're kind of in line with the other city employees.
Yeah, and don't get us wrong. Like, they're not going to be sitting on a bench reading a book, right?
I saw your plan.
Yeah, that's where, you know, they're going to be doing the trash for us. They're going to be, they'll have the gator, so they will go and pick up sticks and trash. So then when people, when the street department comes and mows, they can just mow, and they don't have to stop and pick up a can and pick up a napkin and do all these things, you know? And so that was kind of our thought. I'll let Rex add to it.
Another thing you want to consider also is, it's a seasonal job, so therefore there's no other benefits. We're required to pay PERS. Other employees do get to take advantage of the insurance program, which is a very good benefit to them and should be, you know, it's not necessarily, you don't take it home, but it also covers your, you and your family for medical expenses, and it's a good insurance policy. So there's some, there's some benefits into that to say that if we don't give them that, we want to give them a little bit more money so we can attract somebody.
Okay. After I went home and seen the number, I was just, you know, there's a question. Thank you, thank you for your answer.
It's valid, but like you said, everybody's hiring, you know, for quite a bit of money right now, so.
One additional question along the lines of what I started with earlier. Do we need to change the strength, our strength ordinance for this or not?
No.
Not with it being a seasonal employee, no.
Any other questions? All right, could we get a roll call on the suspension?
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilman Hitt?
Yes.
Councilman McDaniel's?
Yes.
Councilwoman Traynor?
Yes.
Councilman Norman?
Yes.
Councilman Eads? Councilman Stahl?
Yes.
Moved or dealt?
Second.
Who was the first, I'm sorry?
John.
You know it's John, I, we're like bookends over here.
Mr. President, I'd like to address that for a minute. We have a suspension, but we don't have an emergency clause on this. So it's not going to take effect for thirty days.
Yes, there is.
There is?
There should be, yes.
It was changed, sorry, the one that I emailed you.
Oh, is that the one that?
Yeah, didn't have been.
It's not, okay.
But it's been, she emailed us.
Okay.
Did Janelle send an updated?
Okay, so it's not on what we have here.
Yeah, I'll explain that real fast if you don't mind. So we initially talked to Josh about just bringing this before we were able to take it to committee. Then we took it to committee, and that's when Councilman McDaniel said, I'll sponsor it, and I'd like an emergency on it. So that's when we went back, but seeing as it just happened so fast, that's how that all came about and how, yes, there is an emergency on it.
Sorry, I didn't resend it. I saw that it went out to everybody, so.
That's okay. I just followed the one, the one document we have with everything in it, so, thank you.
Noted. I will change it next.
That's all I have.
All right.
Councilman Norman?
Yes.
Councilman Stahl?
Yes.
Councilman Eads?
Yes.
Councilman McDaniel's?
Yes.
Councilwoman Traynor?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilman Hitt?
Yes.
Okay, Resolution one thirty-six dash twenty-four has passed. Onto Resolution one thirty-seven dash twenty-four. Can I get a motion to read by title and number?
So moved.
Second.
Resolution one thirty-seven dash twenty-four, sponsored by Andrew Hitt, a resolution adopting recommendations of the Planning Commission.
Were you able to get that up on the screen? No. Okay, this is London Landing Phase Three. It would have a public hearing June twentieth. I'm not sure how many houses is involved in this phase. Seventy?
Seventy, I believe.
So it's right out in that same area where Phase Two is occurring.
It's basically in the middle section from the, from the planned entrance off of Fifty-Six, houses up through there, and then filling in the middle of the full development, so.
So what's, what's the road coming off of Main Street there?
At the entrance?
Yes.
One of the, one of the entrances?
I can't read the name, but they're going to name that.
Maddox?
Maddox.
Is that what you're talking about? Along by the retention pond?
Yeah.
Maddox? Okay. Would, uh...
Where did that came from? I wonder. That's what I said.
Would that ever be able to tie into, back into Kenny?
Yeah.
It's been discussed that they're going to redirect Kenny another direction around that complex.
Oh, like between the bowling alley?
Between the prison's land and the development, yes.
I didn't know if there's...
That would solve numerous issues if we get that done. And the cost to tie those together, we reached out to engineering firm, and they, it was giving us a rough estimate of five million dollars to do that one thousand feet. Yeah.
Because I was at the planning meeting, and I knew there was discussion, they didn't want to give away the easement agreement. But did they ever tell us where they were going to come out at, down there at the bowling alley area, or are we still in limbo on that?
Yeah, it's going to be, the plan is, is to come out where their parking lot, their main parking lot is.
Just that, okay.
That area.
Because I know, I know when I was here, someone asked, and they, I don't think they ever really answered them.
I mean, that would be the, basically the only place they could come out.
So basically, you're going to be able to access it from Fifty-Six at the bowling alley.
At the bowling alley at the top.
And then they'll be up there where the construction road is now, that's going to become a road.
Correct.
And you're going to be able to get in from Jacob.
From Jacob.
So three entrances?
Correct.
And then, once it's finished, they're going to connect Kenny over there somewhere down at the other end. But for now, you got three entrances.
Yeah.
How can they connect Kenny down there when the state's on the other side of them?
There, all I know is there's been some talks about trying to get some land from the state to put it on. Easements put in through there to put that through.
That's not really shown, this plan, is it?
No.
No, because it wouldn't be, this is just in the middle there, it's not...
And there's still a fourth phase to happen? Is that correct?
Yeah, there's still some houses left. That would be on the road that would extend out and come out through the bowling alley.
And then the Planning Commission, with, I know the traffic study, I know you guys discussed that. That applies to the third phase, or does that really just apply to the fourth phase?
The traffic study applied to the whole, the whole development. If it was completely built out, that's, they were supposed to do the traffic study based on a full build out, and that's what they did it on. And they did the traffic studies showing the ingress egress at the bowling alley also.
That'd be for the last phase, they'd bring in the next.
There's one, I'm assuming there's one more phase left since there's a little partial left. It'll be that road that exits out and the houses that goes along by it, yes.
Any other discussion on this? Again, public hearings will be scheduled for June twentieth, Resolution one thirty-seven dash twenty-four. Onto Resolution one thirty-eight dash twenty-four. Can I get a motion to read by title and number?
So moved.
Second.
Resolution one thirty-eight dash twenty-four, sponsored by John Stahl, a resolution to approve the recommendations planned of the Madison County nine-one-one program review committee.
This is sent by the state to us, and it has to be done tonight, so it has to go in. And it's off of nine-one-one. If we don't do it, it just goes away. Can you explain a little more? That's all it is?
This is essentially just agreeing to have the nine-one-one system that we already have in place for all of the county?
As I understand, yes. This is a continuation?
I move to suspend.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilman McDaniel's?
Yes.
Councilman Eads?
Yes.
Councilman Hitt?
Yes.
Councilwoman Traynor?
Yes.
Councilman Stahl?
Yes.
Councilman Norman?
Yes.
Moved or dealt?
Second.
Councilwoman Traynor?
Yes.
Councilman Stahl?
Yes.
Councilman Hitt?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilman Norman?
Yes.
Councilman McDaniel's?
Yes.
Councilman Eads?
Yes.
Okay, Resolution one thirty-eight dash twenty-four has passed. Onto Resolution one thirty-nine dash twenty-four. Can I get a motion to read by title and number?
So moved.
Second.
Resolution one thirty-nine dash twenty-four, sponsored by Michael Norman, a resolution authorizing the Safety Service Director to advertise for bids and to enter into contract for Stormwater Sewer Project.
We only had one copy of this. I had her read it. So basically, this is so that it allows the Safety Service Director to advertise for bids and enter into contract. It's going to need suspended, and it does have an emergency clause on it, which the emergency clause does fix because it's going toward something that does affect the health of the block, yada, yada. So that's what it is.
Tell us more about that. What's this, what's this coming from originally?
It is, it is part of the, it is part of the, this is part of the, the one, it's partly one, like one point eight million of it is, it's, we've already approved the loans. It's already been approved for the grant.
This grant, my...
Sorry.
Is this the word?
How about you?
Go ahead, Rex.
Go ahead, Rex. You're saying, because I, I don't have the proper, like...
No, he doesn't have, that's fine. We, we have already applied for and received a seventy thousand dollar grant for this project. We also applied for and was granted a one point eight million dollar zero-interest loan for this project. This project has been a very lengthy process in the engineering phase, primarily because it had to go underneath the railroad tracks. Trying to get easements to go under a railroad track is like, takes an act of God to get it done, but I think we finally got it accomplished. So we were waiting on that. There's also easements that we have to get from some residents, and we've got those in place also. Now we're ready to proceed. It's held us up a lot, waiting on all that stuff to get done. There is stipulations that we have to be entered into a contract by the end of June for, as the normal process of the grant and loan through OPWC. So that's why I, you know, I didn't get the final go-ahead from the engineering firm that's been working on all those easements with the railroad. And Jennifer and Bill's been working on the citizens easements. But I got an email from them this morning saying, hey, we're ready. You think you can get this done before the end of June? And I'm like, oh, really crap. If I wait till the first meeting in June, even if you suspend it and pass the first meeting in June, I will not have enough time to get it advertised and enter into contract. With our paper deadline being Tuesday, our meetings on Thursday is just impossible to get done. And then, you know, I reached back out to him, and I asked him what, you know, what the maximum amount I should put on there, and he came back with three million. I know that we've got, what, a little over two and a half million dollars accessible to us. The Stormwater Fund does have substantial funds if it goes over two and a half million, but under three million, we should be able to handle the excess.
And this is the project that we talked about, that was talked about, that it's going to replace the...
It's our main flow, our main store flow that goes to the south of town. It is a storm drain that goes underneath homes.
Right.
We cannot get it lined with it going underneath homes. We can't go in and repair it. So we're basically going to take and add another channel off of our collection point over here with the railroad tracks and take it another direction into the exit point into the ditch line or creek line that it goes into.
This is the one that's going to go down Lincoln. This is the one.
Well, Lincoln, and then goes underneath the houses like on Riley Stewart and Graham?
Right.
That's the one that goes under the houses, yes, on Stewart and Graham, yes.
And this will run adjacent to that or separate than that, but handle some of the same water flow?
Yes.
So the importance is, is it's got to be done by, into June, so we've got to spend the three readings, and we have to make an emergency so that it can go into effect and you can get it in there. Because if it goes the readings and we don't get this done until the first week of June, then...
Yeah, this is something that we've been working on for, you guys know, for many years with the flooding issues and everything, and this is like a big piece to that puzzle to help get that water dispersed and get it out of town and into the creeks.
There's a lot of people down there that are going to be happy with this.
Yeah, you ain't kidding.
I hear about it.
You ain't kidding.
A lot.
So just help me with the math for a minute. This says three million dollars. We've got, we've got over a million dollars in our Storm Sewer Fund itself.
Yeah, so...
That's going to pay for a large part of this than the, we have a loan that's available for one point eight million? Is that correct?
Yeah, yeah.
And a seven hundred thousand dollar grant.
So we're at about two point five, and then the, if it does go up to the three million, then we can take that out of the Stormwater Utility Fund. So there won't be any appropriation out of general fund for it. And once again, we apologize, but you got to love, you got to love Thursday emails at noon that say this needs to be done in, in about a month.
Should I make a motion that we suspend?
Second.
Councilman McDaniel's?
Yes.
Councilwoman Traynor?
Yes.
Councilman Stahl?
Yes.
Councilman Norman?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilman Hitt?
Yes.
Councilman Eads?
Yes.
Moved or dealt?
Second.
Councilman Eads?
Yes.
Councilman McDaniel's?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilman Hitt?
Yes.
Councilwoman Traynor?
Yes.
Councilman Stahl?
Yes.
Councilman Norman?
Yes.
Councilman Stahl?
Yes.
Councilman Norman?
Yes.
Councilman Stahl?
Yes.
Councilman Norman?
Yes.
I, before you guys get started, I just want to say thank you. I know that, that's more suspensions than I know you guys like to do. But definitely some things that we needed to get done tonight to be able to move forward and, and not be able to slow down some of the progress we got going on. So just appreciate your guys, you guys working with us and understanding some of the difficulties that we're going through with this stuff too.
So onto roundtable, Michael, I'll start with you.
Can I have that, I can get it back there? So, so you know, we, we live here in Madison County and, you know, we're London, but kind of Madison County, we're all neighbors. And last Sunday, some of our neighbors were subject to violence and suggestions of violence. We had the active shooter, one of the warehouses down the road from us. Our, our officers responded to help. We're, you know, we're London, they're West Jeff, they're Plain City, but we're all still, you know, we're a community. And I appreciate that our officers were willing to go down there and that they were allowed to go down there. We also had reports of someone with a weapon at our own Cowling Park. So it was a stressful day in our community on Sunday. And while it wasn't optimum, at least we were fortunate that only one life was lost and that was the active shooter. So I would ask that we keep any of the people that were involved in those incidents in our thoughts and prayers. Cause you know, it's a pretty traumatic experience. I saw the video and I'm telling you what, the guy that was sitting in that chair had an angel on his shoulder. Or actually at his back, I'm not really sure. But he, it was a, I, I wasn't ready for that video. I mean, I know it warned you and said, you know, but I've watched gory movies before. But when you see another human being just nonchalantly do something like that, it, it sticks with you. So, so I'd like to make sure we get thoughts out to that. And it, the mayor's already mentioned it, but Sunday, Sunday also brought sad news across the city of the passing of Sean. Great young man that fought four years of battling cancer. But I was reading and his family said he went home. Took the war. So I just want us to keep his family in there and, but I don't know if they need us. You know, I don't know. When they say something like that, that he went home to glory, he may not need us, but let's be there for him anyways. And as we speak of making it home, again, kind of bouncing off the mayor, Second Lieutenant Mara gave his life for his country in 1943. You know, and, and, you know, you, you mentioned it's Hitler's gas station. What would have happened had they not taken that gas station? So this, this is an important thing for us. And to know that he was a graduate of London High School, I mean, that's just icing on the cake. But it took him 82 years and two days to get him here. And his family, again, the families of these people are just amazing. They said, you know, it's been a long awaited day, but they're celebrating his homecoming. And they said, mission accomplished. And so I would ask that we also keep them in our thoughts and our prayers, because that's a hard thing to go through, not knowing where your loved one is. And then, and then lastly, just for those of you that are here, thanks for coming out. Those that are watching, thanks for coming out and have a great evening.
John?
Thanks everyone coming out. I just want to say prayers and everything to the soldiers after all those years. And young Sean, what a fight he put up and everyone's prayers are with him and that's all I have to say.
All right, Shannon?
The 1811 group had the downtown shop hops again this evening. Hopefully that was well attended. And the next, I don't, I do believe the downtown group is not going to try to interfere with anything going on with the strawberry festival or the, the fair. So look for the next downtown event sometime in August.
Andy?
It's something I forgot to mention about in the service meeting, we had a road grading report that was submitted. And several roads or streets failed as far as standards. And several were, or many were in poor condition also. So I assume some kind of street work will come out of that at some point. I think we appropriated 900,000 towards that, so there should be some street repairs coming along. And I thank everyone for coming out and paying attention on, online. The next finance meeting is June 10th at 5:30 in the meeting room next door. And the next service meeting is June 11th at 5 o'clock in the meeting room next door.
Rich?
I'll talk a lot, about a lot of heroes tonight. Sean. The courage of that man, and he was a man. And I look around and I see these, and I'm going to say it, idiots protesting and tearing up buildings and. And then you have this young man going through what he went through. And he didn't act, he was a man. He was a man's man. Went through it for four years and prayed for him, I think every night. I'd pray for this young man. But I know where he's at and I know he's not sick anymore. He's got no cancer. And his body is better than it's ever been. I know that for a fact. Lieutenant Mara. I was in Vietnam. And I, I'm going to talk about another young man. I lost some good Marine buddies over there that were close to me. I have a good friend that won the Congressional Medal of Honor. He killed 35 soldiers that overrun his position and he was the only one left in his platoon that was able to fire. And they've named a bridge after him in Palmroy, Ohio. It's called the Heroes Bridge, but his name is synonymous with it. They're putting a statue up of him next weekend. And he was 26 years old when they finally took him out. He was a hell of a man. And I want to talk about our police officers. When everybody's running out, they're running in. They don't think about it, they go do their jobs. They're heroes and the next time you see one of them walk up and thanking for a job well done. And I want to throw our firemen and our, our first responders in with that also. Been a rough week, been a rough week. I just about lost my brother-in-law yesterday. He's septic right now. He's in the hospital ICU. So it's been a rough week. But just want to thank the Lord for watching over us and taking care of us and blessing us with a great city and great people. These people in this, this community are just, they don't, I just don't think you get any better people. Madison County, a great county. It's just a good place to live. Proud to call it my home. Memorial Day's coming up. Honor those people that gave their life for what you have today. And take a few minutes and just. Listen to the bugles and say a prayer, say a prayer. Thank you.
Okay, Brett?
I'd like to thank everyone for coming out and definitely keep the Shaboskis in your thoughts and prayers.
Greg?
I'm proud of this council, we fixed some problems tonight. That storm sewer that we pushed through tonight, that project, everything flows that way. So if you can't get out the end point, it's going to back up other places. I really hope that that goes a long way to fixing the problems that people have had over the years. The park monitor or whatever we're going to call that position, I think, I think the administration's listened to people that have said, I don't feel so comfortable taking my kids to the park. I also think it was needed, even if that wasn't the cause, just to have somebody up there to keep an eye on things. Keep the trash, make sure the bathrooms, you know, are, are clean, make sure there's nothing going on. So I'm actually glad to see that happen. I talked to a gentleman today who is a, in the mortgage industry. And he was telling me that he, he likes London, he rides his bike here. He hasn't really experienced our downtown so much. But he did mention that whether it was last year, the year before, I'm not sure, he did take a bike ride into London and happened upon the strawberry festival. His complaint, and it's something that maybe the 1811 group or, or someone wants to address, maybe the city, was he didn't have a place to put his bike. He had to walk it around because he didn't have a place he thought he could park it and leave it. And so maybe that's something we want to look at. That's a small thing that maybe we do to help London become the bike town that we, we have people pushing for. And last of all, I, I can't really add much to what everything, everybody said about Sean Sabolski. He was, he was very inspirational for a long time. I know the mayor had probably seen him in the same place that I did. And when he was healthy enough, he would go down and umpire at the LABC games. And I knew how sick he had been. And when you seen him on that field and he looked happy. When you seen him on that field, you just, it made me feel good that he was out there and that he could do that at that time. He's been very inspirational and my condolences to the family also.
Greg, about the, the bike racks, that's, that's not a bad idea. We, we do have public parking down there, so we could talk about putting some bike racks there. And then people could park it in public parking. I assume they'd have to lock it up themselves, but at least there would be, you know, and that's pretty close, that's centrally located. So just a thought, maybe bring it up at the next public service. If you guys want to throw that on the agenda. The other thing is, is that we are going to have a couple outdoor movies. And the first one is going to be actually at the end of this month, so I apologize for not talking about it, but it's May 31st. And it's going to be Teenage Mutant Ninja Turtle, Mutant Mayhem, the new animated one. And then, then the second one, I can't, the date is, let's see. The second one, we're going to kind of. Kind of add a little flavor to it and do like a little quote unquote kind of carnival at the park. Where we'll have some bounce houses and face painters and do some different things. And that's going to be on June 28th. And by that time, Kung Fu Panda 4 will be out, that we can get that. So we'll be doing Kung Fu Panda 4 on June 28th and then May 31st, end of this month is TMNT, Mutant Mayhem. So just to let you guys know, those will be going on down at Cowling Park.
I have a question. Can you hear me? I feel like I'm lost somewhere. My ears must be stuffed up or something. So last year, if I recall, you, the, you like reached out to the community and didn't like, different community like sponsor the movies? Did you do that this year and I missed it?
No, I did not. But if somebody would like to sponsor one, they're more than welcome. But the second one, we, we wanted. So just to back up, we wanted to do this kind of carnival thing where we had bounce houses and kind of make a day out, like, you know, they come early and, and we're going to have, you know, popcorn machine and all these different things. Well, we were going to do that at the beginning, so we knew that would be a little more expensive, so we. But then we had to move it to the second one because of timing and trying to get everything in and be able to get the bounce houses and all that. So we did not, I just took it out of my miscellaneous fund to pay for the two movies.
Okay.
So.
And also I'm going to put a shameless plug in here, the London Lions on June 8th, free community event. Going to serve hot dogs, hamburgers, bouncy house, face painting, animals, duck race. I won't keep going.
Good.
It's going to be at Cowling Park.
Awesome.
Cowling Park also.
Josh?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, since everybody else was talking, I figured I would say something very quick. This is always an emotional month for me and I'll try to get through this, if you guys haven't seen me crying over here the whole time. We have a Gold Star family member on our board, or on our council now. And. I just want to thank you and for your sacrifice and say Josh McDaniel's. He was one of my son's really good friends and I just, every year, it's very hard during Memorial Day. And I just wanted to thank you, Councilman.
Thank you.
That was embarrassing.
It's all right.
I don't cry often, but.
I'm going to piggyback on everybody else with the Sabolski, Sabolski family. Sean, junior year this year, he's a big baseball guy. I think this London baseball team right now, I think, let's give them some drive with Sean, they're on a seven game winning streak. They just won their second tournament game this evening. They play again Monday night against Bishop Waterson. They ended up tying for second in the league this past year. This is probably one of the best baseball teams they've had in good, good, so again, my condolences to the Sabolski family. And thank you gentlemen for coming out this evening and that's all I have. Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.